At this time, I will call the With County Board of Supervisors meeting of August the 13th to order. Would everyone please stand while Reverend Amy Whitley of Mount Pleasant United Methodist Church [unintelligible] remain standing for the pleasure of ladies.
Lord, we thank you for the calling you have on our lives. We ask God that you would help us to have wisdom in our leadership and that we would feel your spirit and the calling of taking care of these dear ones and stewardship of all that you have given us. We come to you in gratitude, seeking your Holy Spirit, in Christ's name. Amen.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, let me welcome everyone here tonight. We have two citizens who have signed up to speak to the board. The first one being Mr. Mural Clifford, and Mural would like to talk about the Royal Tree With County Fair. Mr. Clifford?
Mr. Chairman, Danny, and members of the With County Board Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity. I want to understand that the remarks I make is from Mural Clifford, not from any organization particularly, but it's concerning, as you see, the Royal Tree With County Fair. And this is the first time I've participated in a fair in a long time. I was someone wanted some of my honey and some of my berries to exhibit at the fair. Got involved, they were wanting exhibits. I went out to the farm, and apple crop is good this year. I told them they were green, but they were colored. I gathered up seven, eight varieties of apples out on the Crockett farm. Some of them I'd grafted, some of them was native to the farm there, and entered those. First time I'd entered anything at fair in close to 50 years, I guess. And I hadn't been involved in a fair, but the first involvement I had at fair, I guess, was the 4-H Club gave me a pig to raise when I was young. One of the obligations for raising this pig was that you would show it at the fair when it grew up. The other thing was, if you had a litter of pigs, you gave them one back. So that was, but when I lived in Iroh County, Mooresville, North Carolina, I'd take vegetables and whatever I grew up there, canned some stuff, we'd take and enter it in the fair. And I don't remember too much about it, but anyway, I entered those apples, honey and berries, and got a whole handful of blue ribbons and one red one there. But it was, it was real interesting. And then Tog spent a little time up there and observing. This is the With County Fair, and I did not see a lot of support from the county at the fair. And I haven't talked with anyone, but the talk I've heard, the fair, the weather was bad, and they're not sure whether they're going to be able to put on another fair with their finances. And I think this is operated by a board, With County Fair, and I'm not sure what they call themselves. What they, what I observed there, they have a, they have exhibits, and they do a good job. They have fruits, vegetables, flowers, canned goods, sewing, antiques, cooking, and other. So you've got a pretty good representation from people that participate. There's not enough people participate in that, though. I'm not sure how much it would take to encourage them. Now, showing these ribbons, I got nine blue ribbons, one ribbon, and $10. So you can, you can see how much incentive it is for people to enter exhibits at the fair. But in looking, things that they could use up there, and it was muddy this week, they could use a lot of grading, drainage, parking area improvement, probably buildings for livestock exhibits and things of this sort. I'm not sure how much money that would take. I could say, well, you could put $2 million up there and really, really make a showing. And that would help, in my estimation, you talk about tourism and so on, that would really help things. Because they having, they have, they have tractor pulls, antique tractor shows, horse shows, they could have dog shows, various things if you had the facilities. So I'm, don't know how much, how much support our government puts in the fair. I haven't, I haven't asked that question, but I don't think it's enough. So I'd just like to, that's what I'd like to say, is for me, observations I make, and it's an enjoyable experience to go and maybe get a little recognition for what you do, but if you can make it, help make it financially feasible for people, I think you'd have a lot more participation. You, you could probably put out something like we put out here back and distribute it and get more interest. This was publication that's put out back in 1990, and as you know, my wife was chairman of Commerce, and had a big hand in this publication. But that's my remarks, and thank you.
Mr. Clifford, I'm going to date myself. I can remember when I was a little boy, we used to have what they call Woodfield Diet Affairs, and we had a parade. All the Woodfield cars would line up on Main Street and head to Royal Tree at the same time.
We need to do some more of that, Danny.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
I'd date myself, too. I raised one of the 4-H pigs.
Okay. That was interesting.
It was, yeah, it was a cheap way to get, you know, get some pigs.
I remember, you know what, the county agent brought that pig to my house and the floor board of his car. So anyway, it's, I think all of us should support the fair more and taking this up and picking it up. I've talked to people there, and they, and I'd see, I'd see young people come through there looking at the exhibits. This one girl come through and looking at the garden produce, said, well, I'm going to grow something like that next year, I'm going to bring this myself. And she must have been 14 years old, but she was, so as young people come through the entrance and looking exhibits, so we need to see what we can do to spark that. Thank you, Danny.
Our next speaker is Ms. Linda Meyer.
Good evening, gentlemen. I was also at the fair, and I'd just like to respond to Mr. Clifford. Participation was way bad, and it has been going down, but I think we don't need money. I think we need some innovative leadership. I think that's the way to go, and I think we could do a whole lot for free there if we had the right people that were willing to work at it. I'm really interested in cell service. Last week, I got a telephone call and an invite to a meeting in Smith County. A property owner over there at the western side, our side of Smith County, has donated some property, and they're looking to put a cell tower in. I had asked you guys quite a while ago about cell service. We don't have it in Speedway, we would like service in Speedway. Were letters sent out? Did we get any replies? Was there any investigation? And what about some strategy to help out the people in Speedway area with cell service?
Can you respond? I've talked about the two predominant, I'm going to call it the two predominant carriers in With County, the US Solar and AT2. What about those who respond to demographic stuff, providing enough revenue from there to build cell towers?
Well, it's really strange that they're going to proceed with this in Smith County. So that's like, you know, we have a whole lot more people in the western end of Smith County, it's just very strange. Do we, by chance, own the property that the new water tower is on in, on 21? Do we own that piece of property that the water tower's on? The new one? So there's a piece of property that the county owns that perhaps could be used for a cell tower. So maybe that might be an incentive to go to pursue with some of these companies, saying that we do have a piece of property available, and it might be an incentive to them. So if we could look into that, that would really be good. Thanks, guys.
That's all the citizens that signed up for Citizens Time, so I will close it at this time. And we will move to minutes of the previous meeting, July 23, 2013. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
These are a second.
I'll second.
Moving to a second now. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as they were presented? Seeing none, I'll call for folks. Mr. Hoaney?
Ah.
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 Yeah, thank you. Next, we will move to the payment of the invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay the invoices.
I deserve a second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to pay the invoices. Anyone have any discussion concerning any invoice? Seeing none, we're moving pretty fast. Mr. Hall?
He's not here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hale.
Ah.
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 And ah, thank you. Old business? Mr. Dalton, do we have any old business? All right. We'll move to new business, and the first thing is the revenue sharing. We have a letter from the Department of Transportation talking about revenue sharing for the fiscal year 1415, which is, the way I interpret it, Mr. Dalton, we can apply for up to $1 million, is that correct?
Actually, each local can request up to 10.
Up to 10? That's even better. That's our, can request up to 10.
The letter itself requests, just provide the, I guess, what we would want, that we would ask for the next fiscal year, so they can take, have that prepared, ready for General Assembly's budget, Governor's budget in December. None amount that y'all like to apply for, or we need to send in a letter stating, we intend, anticipate, not intend, to apply for this many dollars in next year's budget.
Is all this going to be in transportation districts, or however we choose?
Well, there's two piles of budgets, either new dollars or new roads or whatever. So it could be transportation districts, it could be just allocations from the board supervisors. We do know that we're in, we'll be in the second year of asking for funds for the design and property acquisition, a route out to Brockers Park, relocation of Pepper's Fair. So we know, we think we have to ask for at least a million dollars on that. But if there's other routes, and there's no reason not to write a letter, say we intend to ask for two or three. It's just a statement that we're going to use as a budget in the Governor's budget.
Any board member have any comments?
They're asking for a letter prior to the due date in November the 1st?
Yes. There's, well, they just want to know how much they need to present for next year's budget. This year, they...
And then November the 1st is when the applications are due? Okay.
They're making no commitment, just giving...
We're just giving them a dollar amount of what we may ask for.
On the access, what are you thinking? You're not thinking just asking for a minimum amount on that, because we can always not accept it all.
Well, when we started, it was a three-year project. This year, we got, they cut us back from the million we asked for, 900 something thousand. We anticipate property acquisition, final design, preliminary plans, next fiscal year, and then the following year, when we have a prospect, or when we have a prospect, we ask for construction, which construction means actually 3 million, which we could ask for a million and a half. Now, you can ask, just go ahead and ask for it and say, we intend to ask for 5 million, or maybe a little guidance from the board.
Excuse me, gentlemen, could we ask for maintenance? We have a major maintenance problem on all the roads in With County. So can you agree that?
It can be asked for in maintenance, up to 50% of roads.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Stephen, have you had any time to work on what I brought up at the last meeting? For the transportation districts?
He's something like this. Yes. Seven, 10, 12 years.
So right now, if we ask for those projects, it's just a preliminary thing, and we'll have time to work out the details prior to November? Do you need a motion, or just?
I think we just need to refer it to a committee. We can ask for a sum right now, I guess, can we not?
Put a number in.
Well, I think we ought to ask for all the projects now, and be sure that we get enough to cover right away acquisition and planning, but while this money is available, I'd be in favor of asking for all that.
Four million?
No, it won't take 10 million to do all the things we're talking about. But we've seen this money come and go. Is that correct?
Actually, it's increased over the past 10 years. Initially, it was a sum of 5 million dollars total for the state of Virginia. It's grown over the years, and now, I think this thing says there's next year, 150 million. Allocation to next year, 2015 is 150 million.
But has there been funding ever by any of, for the last 10 years of some amount? There's always more requests than they have money.
Always more requests. Our request this, this year was reduced.
Eastern counties, northern Virginia counties eat up a lot of that quest every year.
Did you have a figure in mind?
Well, Mr. Dalton's got a construction pre-budget, pre-designed budget, mine of 3 million for construction, and you said, we've got pre-engineering or engineering is covered now.
Yes.
So we've got right away acquisition and final plans and construction. So what's the value of that?
4 million.
So that would take care of that one project. Then the other three don't amount to but, what, a million, two?
Yep. You're talking about Connors Valley?
Connors Valley and...
It's funded in this year's budget. It's, we currently have...
Okay, so that's what we got Stephen working on?
Yes.
Okay.
Connors Valley, Fairwell, both farms.
Both farms. So that's the three.
So that has, that has been funded.
Okay. Funded by VDOT. We're still struggling with our part, but, okay, so there's a number that I would think.
4 million?
Over 4 and 1/2.
Four, whatever the pre-budgets come out to.
Well, it also, excuse me, it also said, encouraged you to apply for the maximum amount, which is 10 million dollars. I would rather ask for 10 million, they might give you 10 million.
I kind of concur with Corey. Ask for it all, and then we'll decide what's available for us after our November 1st. Here at the night, we haven't given this any great deal of study.
No.
And we're asking for a figure off the top of our head, and ask for it all, and then we... How does that sound?
Suits me fine, just didn't want to scare you and see you go into car wreck arrest here. We got good rough in the back.
Well, I have a history with the state, and I know when you ask for it all, what you're really going to get.
Is that a reasonable thing to do, though? Or do we need to make it somewhat of a realistic, yeah, number, maybe inflate it somewhat?
Well, if you ask for 5, and they're going to cut everybody 20%, and you ask for 10, they're going to cut everybody 20%. Maybe y'all to ask for 7, hoping to get you 5. Closer? I don't know. I agree with Corey, that's ask for it all.
I still say I'd ask for it all.
I don't have a motion yet, the way I remember it, two weeks over there. I don't have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we ask for 10 million.
No, I'll second that motion.
Moving to a second. Any more discussion on that ticket?
It just, it concerns me that it looks like, yeah, we haven't given it much thought.
Right.
Yeah.
It don't mean we're accepting it, it means we're asking to be put in the budget at that level.
Right.
We can pare it down at the time of application, correct, Mr. Dalton?
Yes, sir.
You know, VDOT...
To me, that's kind of like, when we do our budget hearings, we, everybody comes in, we're, we're always figuring that they're asking for everything that they want, knowing that they're not going to get everything they want. So it's kind of like us fussing at them for doing it, and then we're turning around doing the same thing.
Well, you, you drive these roads, you know we've needed funding.
Oh, I know we need funding.
For roads for 100 years. I can't remember that, along with Danny can. We've needed road money, now it's available, and...
I, I agree, Joe, but the thing is, if we ask for 10 million, I mean, I know we're not obligating ourselves to get that 10 million, but can we come up with 10 million to match it?
I don't think we can. I think we can, but I don't think we will.
I don't think we're going to need it anyway, John. You know, I asked for a lot of things at Christmas, and I sure didn't get everything I asked for.
I didn't call for the question.
Question's been called for. Seeing that, there's no other discussion. Mr. Hale?
Ah.
Ms. Howson?
No.
Ah.
Ah.
And Sheriff, a motion passes. Five. Next, we have a letter from the Mountain Community Action Program requesting a nominee for their replacement to, from With County, to their, to their board. Mr. Doug Brown has resigned. Anyone have anybody in mind for that position?
Do we have anybody that's applied for any appointments?
Have copied the board on all of them.
We'll put that under own business and revisit it, and if, ask any board member who might go out to community and find somebody that might be interested and/or check if we have applications in that have mentioned this, if they'd like to serve. All right, we'll move on to the opening session for With County Schools. We have an invitation, hopefully everyone will try to attend. Mr. Howson's going to give about a 15-minute talk.
Yeah, unless there's an offering.
This is just for information, just to let you know that they are having that disturbance.
Yes.
And it'll be at the community center, not one of the schools. Next on the agenda is the Barron Springs Water Project.
Mr. Chairman, this is the third component of the board authorized, staff, application to provide water to eastern end of county for Barron Springs. We have a letter of conditions for rural development that provides for the castle proportion of that project previously we've received. Today, we have a change department of health concerning both ends, Jackson School, and Barron Springs itself, and ex-both farms. So this will allow us to move forward with this project. First step will be to actually have a task and procure an engineer, request that the board prefer that interviews to the water committee.
Okay. They can also look at the water rates and also, the letter of conditions that have to do. So the chair will refer this to the water committee. Transportation districts.
Do you have, Corey, an annual report for Mr. Barry concerning transportation districts?
Mr. Barry, you want to say anything, comments concerning transportation districts?
Basically, right now, we're down to, to these last two. As you can see from the report, both of them, especially the wet stone vinyl, with the decreased cost from, from VDOT and the other, we should be able to reduce the rate next year. A little bit concerned about the outstanding unpaid there, but Mr. Crockett works on collecting those, but that's a little bit higher percentage than what we're used to seeing on those. And the Hidden Valley one, like I said, be a slight decrease in 2015, and that one would be completed.
Any other new business, Mr. Dalton, that you know of?
I think we have a priority of memorandums, understanding between With County and the government. Anyone consider this and revert to one of the committees, the vice committee, but it is the proposal for that, since they don't plan on starting this until November, it's a period to accept the proposal.
Just refer to budget now?
That'd be correct.
All right, refer to budget from you. Any other new business?
I've got one that's not on the agenda.
All right, sir.
Could we get in touch with the VDOT and see about putting some water depth delineators in that dip on Whispering Pond where that accident happened? And look into what we have to do to relieve that situation? It's not a VDOT problem? Have you looked at it?
Actually, I, VDOT has looked at it, but everybody understands what the problem is with the downstream cold, it's undersized, causes a back-up. It's a road situation there. Reality is, the state of Virginia, VDOT should take action. They're impeding the drainage way, causing back-ups on the secondary, almost onto a primary road.
That storm a month ago, it's not only a... That storm a month ago, it's not only a undersized pipe, it's now clogged with debris, and the debris's on private property. I don't know the action, but it seemed like to me that past history and precedent is when you've created a blockage of natural drainage, I think the precedent is you're responsible for it. Is that your understanding?
My understanding, if I've been a lawyer, what the code of justice is, you are the creative hazard, restricted flow downstream.
The delineators are a minimum safety, but it's not gonna help the problem other than warning people they're about to get swept off the road there. We've come real close, from my understanding and the photographs that I've seen of that incident, of loss of life. And it, something needs to happen. This is not unlike the responsibility of the board. We've talked about other things. If it's a VDOT thing, can we take action to promote or provoke or promote VDOT to do the right thing?
I think the board can ask a resolution, ask the VDOT to correct the drainage problem, take whatever action, sort of what you did with the General Department of Health and Baron Springs.
Well, that's what I had in mind. It seemed to have worked there. I think it's working. Have you looked at it, Mr. Reese?
No, I ain't been down there since this last, last episode that they had down there.
But this is, it happens about on a naming basis, since I've been, they, VDOT replaced their colder two summers ago. They replaced the bigger colder. It's just made the situation downstream worse.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we have the county administration draft a resolution to have VDOT correct the problem.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. We'll do a roll call vote for a resolution. Mr. Hale?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Any other business before we recess?
Clarification, as part of that conclusion request, do delineators replace?
Yes, because I think delineators could be put in right now. This other remedy is gonna take some time.
That would be a short-term safety fix, or partial one.
Okay, it doesn't need a, that's just a clarification of the resolution.
Okay.
Being no other business, I will recess this meeting until 7:00 AM in the morning, when the legal attorney's gonna be here with us. Thank you. At this time, I'll order a closed session and ask for a resolution.
Whereas the Whip County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to the firm's record vote and the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Whip County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Whip County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies, and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in closed meetings to which this application resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Whip County Board of Supervisors.
Can I have a second to the resolution?
I'll second.
The resolution has been made and seconded. Now we'll call for a certification vote. Mr. Horne?
Ah.
Ah.
And aye. We have certified the closed session. Thank you. Are there any motions to be made?
Mr. Chairman, after, after long deliberation and consideration, there's a motion that comes from the Final Rescue Committee to dissolve a lead mines rescue squad and to reorganize, you know, under, you know, under different circumstances and different leadership.
Coming from the committee, it does not need a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 And aye. Is there a resolution to be made at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend the board adopt the following resolution. It would be Resolution Number 2013-8 of the Whip County Board of Supervisors dissolving the Lead Mines Rescue Squad, Inc., needs to follow us. Whereas the Lead Mines Rescue Squad, Inc. is a volunteer company operating in Whip County, Virginia, and whereas Virginia Code, Section 27-10, provides that the governing body of the county may dissolve a fire or rescue EMS company for any reason it deemed advisable. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lead Mines Rescue Squad, Inc. is hereby dissolved and its existence terminated, and be it further resolved that all of, all of the property of the Lead Mines Rescue Squad, Inc. is now property of Whip County, Virginia. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Do I have a supervisor making that resolution for the rest of the county?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the Resolution 2013-8.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, the resolution has been moved and seconded properly, endorsed, and seconded. Any discussion toward the resolution? Seeing none, I'll call for the resolution vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 And aye. Thank you. Any other motions to come forward?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we allow the county administrator and county attorney to do any legal and financial paperwork that's involved in, in executing this resolution.
A second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion concerning this motion? Seeing none, again, I'll call for the roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 And aye. Thank you. Any other business to come before the board at this time? Seeing none, then we are adjourned. Thank you.